All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Public Hearing on Tuesday, October 29, 2024. It's 3:31 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Our Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, is excused today. He's serving us on a statewide task force on jail modernization up north. So we appreciate that. I have Commissioner Gary Edwards to my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Emily, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carolyn Mahia to my right, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Rob Gelder and Josh Cummings. We are here to address CPA 7A Grand Mount West UGA Expansion Land Use Plan and Rezone Amendment. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment regarding this, or this CPA 7A, which is made of two applicant-initiated amendments and has been officially docketed since 2022. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online, select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Ashley Arai, Interim Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, will provide information on this topic and answer any questions from the board. I will read the names on the signup sheet, basically who's up and who's on deck so that everybody can be ready to come up to the podium when called. If you are online and would like to testify, your name will be called. Just, just hold tight. You will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, state your name and address for the record. So, we're opening the public hearing, and we are now looking to Ashley. There you are. We're wearing a different color earlier. Ashley will present background information of the proposed amendment, summarize written comments submitted, and provide any additional information requested by the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will try to keep this brief since we do have a full room. Ashley Arai, Interim Director, Community Planning and Economic Development. As was mentioned, this is a hearing for a community, our comprehensive plan docket item CPA-78, the Grand Mount West UGA Expansion. This public hearing is to take comment on two owner-initiated proposals that request to expand the urban growth area boundary and change the land use and zoning on the applicant's parcels. The Black Lake Quarry proposal is on the northwest border of the Grand Mount Urban Growth Area. I did leave a map up there for you, and there are extras in the back if anyone wants to grab them so you can orient yourself. This proposal would change 66 acres from rural resource, rural residential resource, one house per five acres, to light industrial. Although it is zoned residential, the site is currently used as a mine. The second proposal, which we refer to as the Womoski proposal, is on the west border of the Grand Mount Urban Growth Area and would change 29 acres from rural residential resource, one house per five acres, to residential four to 16 dwelling units per acre. The Grand Mount West Project has been identified as priority number one on the comprehensive plan docket. The needs for the, the need for the proposed changes are supported by the 2023 industrial land study, as well as the recent housing allocation work that was done for the Thurston region. The projects within this proposal have been previously reviewed alongside the Grand Mount Subarea Plan update in 2022 and 2023. In August of 2023, the board did direct staff to separate these two proposals from the rest of the subarea plan due to their geographical proximity and the fact that they were urban growth area expansion requests. Public hearing with the planning commission was held in November of 2022, and on December of 2022, the planning commission did make recommendations of no change for the Black Lake Quarry property zoning, as well as no change for the Womoski property. These recommendations were based on the limited industrial and housing analyses that were available at that time. However, there has been a lot more work done. In December 2023, the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners based on the recently completed industrial and housing studies. And in January 2024, the board provided direction to staff to move forward with the environmental analysis on both of these proposals. The board was previously briefed in person or via e-briefs on May 17 of 2023, August 3 of 2023, as well as September 19 of 2023, and September 19 of 2024. In January of this year, the board provided direction to move forward with the environmental analysis, and a mitigated determination of nonsignificance was issued on October 10 of this year. The appeal period for that ends October 31. No comments have been received at this point. Previously, both of the proposals were shared with the public through the Grand Mount Subarea Plan, and which included in-person open house and online open house, project webpage, mailed informational postcards, planning commission work sessions, and public hearings, as well as associated public notices and a press release. On October 1, staff requested the public hearing be set by the board, and subsequently, a public notice was published, and then Esquali Valley News email notification to interested properties, or parties, was also sent on October 3, and a press release was issued on October 18. All the current documents are available online at the community planning's website. To date, or as of noon today, we have received six written comments, and we look forward to hearing comments during the public hearing. One of these written comments is in support of the Womoski proposal. One of the comments is in support of the Black Lake Quarry proposal. We have received three comments that stated they were in opposition to the Womoski project citing concerns with school capacity, zoning consistency, and prairie preservation. There was also a letter submitted by the Department of Commerce yesterday citing concerns with Growth Management Act consistency, and suggesting to the board that they delay the Womoski proposal one year so it can be considered with the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer questions before taking comments for the public hearing.
Questions for Ashley? Can you, so I caught 29 acres for Womoski. What was the acres that were?
Um, 66.
That's what I thought. And it's probably worth highlighting, and to correct me if I'm wrong, but these, that's the Grand Mount Subarea Plan had a range of proposals, some we called internal, because they didn't really, they were rezoned within the UGA. There were, I want to say four, if not five, that were UGA expansions. All but these two were denied by the board, if I remember correctly.
The UGM Subcommittee recommended not to move forward on those, and they were not docketed. It was, it was just one more UGA expansion on the east side that the board decided not to docket.
It was Deskins and Jackson, I believe.
Jackson was a rezone proposal, and that has since been withdrawn, and then-
You changed it to a rezone at some point.
Yeah.
Okay. These were the two that survived the initial scrutiny of the UGM Subcommittee and the board's docketing process.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions before we get to the public comment? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And it's in regards to the Department of Commerce letter, and I'm wondering, just in terms of the timing, right? It's coming in, you know, at this time, we've been going through this process. I know staff have been in constant communication with them, and so I'm just, like, why are these concerns now? I'm wondering, right? Like, where, where have these, have they demonstrated these concerns in the past? Like, how did we get?
If, for them, I think it's more of an order of when certain planning processes are completed, and their letter really focuses on wanting a buildable lands report updated, and/or a complete update to the comprehensive plan before the board would consider the proposal. So it's not necessarily a substance thing as much as a timing thing.
Okay. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
I'll start calling folks. Craig Conger is up first, and Carolyn Womoski will be on deck.
Thank you. My name is Craig Conger. I reside in Grand Mount Rochester area. I have many concerns about the rezoning on 198th and Rochester. Among my many concerns, not all of them, but schools are overcrowded. I have a daughter who goes to school there now, and she's in a job shack, a mobile classroom. Crime, certainly, traffic, roads. I mean, if you're going to put 464 homes, we're going to have to do something with the roads. This includes T Street, 201st, 198th. Their land sits a little higher. Where is all that water going to go if it's full of concrete and asphalt? Is there a plan for this? So I have some concerns about flooding, noise, property values, privacy. I'd also like to know what the setback is going to be from the UGA to the RR15. I feel like four to 16 dwellings an acre is just too many for, for this small neighborhood. It's designated rural residential resource one through five for a reason. One of the reasons for this RR15 zoning is the rich agricultural history of the area. This area is part of the fruit and garden tracts. I believe it would be beneficial to keep the zoning one through five, one to five, as it was originally intended. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Womoski with Tony Cantus on deck. Four minutes.
Okay. Yes, I'm Carolyn Womoski, and the property has been in our family for over 50 years, and, and I'd really appreciate if you could help with the zoning, and hope that it can go through. Thank you.
You guys are very concise today. I like this. Okay, Tony, Mr. Cantus, and then David Toyers on deck.
For the record, I'm Tony Cantus, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comment and support of the Womoski rezone and expansion into the Grand Mount UGA. I have been a land use planner in the southbound area for approximately 29 years, in which 19 and a half years were as a land use planner for Thurston County Planning Department. My education includes an undergraduate degree in urban planning and a master's degree in public administration. That took me five years to complete. The only reason why I mention the graduate work is that I worked here at Thurston Planning Department full-time during that time, and it was the time that the state adopted the Growth Management Act, requiring the local governments to comply with the GMA. And during this time, it allowed me to write several papers on GMA as it relates to Thurston County. The GMA is what requires counties to establish UGAs, which is in question of the rezone application. Throughout my planning career, I have reviewed hundreds of single-family plats and multifamily projects. I have also reviewed nine rezone applications in other, in another jurisdiction. Based on my education and work experience, there is no question the Womoski property should be approved to be rezoned and included in the UGA. My reasons include the subject two parcels, but the existing UGA. Public sewer and water are easily available to the site with the level of service being available to provide these services to the property. The property has access to public transportation. No topography or critical areas on the site that could encumber the development, which is very, very rare. The property fronts both 198th and 201st Avenue, which is highly uncommon, and if the property was to be developed to urban standard, the developer would be required to interconnect the roadways with a new road at the developer's expense, which would help traffic flow in the area and improve emergency vehicle access to the general area of Grand Mount. If the property was to be developed at the current zoning of one to five, this road connection would not occur. I also believe at the time the Grand Mount Urban Growth Area was established by Thurston County, the county expected much more growth in the area than that has transpired in the last 30-plus years. I believe at the time the UGA was established, the county had invested a lot of money in the Grand Mount Public Water and Sewer Systems to improve the level of service, and the county has not received a return in the initial investment that there was, that there has been. No, few connections to the systems as anticipated. I believe the reason why the Grand Mount UGA has not seen as much growth as the county had originally anticipated is that the moderate-sized lots in the area that are already developed with single-family residences and normal pertinences to those residences, these property owners probably enjoy their larger lots for their needed purposes, such as garden space and larger detached shops, and other uses that are typically accessory to a single-family use. People also enjoy no monthly cost to septic system and a well. Another major reason I believe the rezone should be approved is that the county is in major need for obtainable housing, which this property can provide if the rezone is approved. Much of this rezone request and being within the UGA is driven by the Growth Management Act. So now I want to focus on the 15 goals of GMA, and number one being urban growth. The proposal includes being included in the UGA as the UGA butts the property, and urban services are easily available to the property. I am surprised that the property was not included in the UGA when the UGA was originally established with consideration of the site's characteristics. Reduced sprawl. The subject property is not in the middle of the rural portion of the county, but is located immediately adjacent to the UGA with urban services being available. Number three, transportation.
You need to wrap up, sir.
Well, I'll skip that goal. I provided this as, in the portal, because I knew the lack of time. So, but there's documents. I want you to look at the aerial. You can see much of the area already being developed to maximum allowable density. These plats are mobile homes and plats that have existed for decades, and you also see a lot of moderate-sized one-acre lots that are already developed with single-family residences that have also existed for decades. I don't foresee any of these lots being redeveloped to their maximum density. Also, there's a lot of lots encumbered by oak trees and other critical areas, which preventing development on a lot of these lots. In the subject case, it's not there. The second document is the TIA, which the applicant paid a traffic engineer to complete the TIA, and established traffic mitigation, which the applicants will mitigate with.
I need to cut you off, sir.
Okay, and the last document is the Plan Commission Recommendation. Recommendation provides no findings to the reason to the decision, which I feel is very strange and uncommon to a decision and recommendation. Thank you.
And everything you submitted will be part of our record as well. David Toyer, and then, having trouble reading the next name, so we'll get to that after Mr. Toyer.
Thank you, Commissioners. David Toyer, Toyer Strategic Advisors out of Everett, Washington. We're land use consultant for Black Lake Quarry, which is one of the two proposals before you in the Grand Mount West consideration. Really urge you to approve the Black Lake Quarry UGA expansion. It's been several years in the making now. The county has since done a countywide industrial land study that showed a significant deficit to the number of large industrial sites that are available for future inventory. The UGA, UGM Subcommittee has recommended this proposal as being consistent with the countywide planning policies. As was mentioned by the prior speaker, both of these proposals have had traffic analysis done showing that the development is possible with the existing infrastructure, and that individual projects can be reviewed for specific mitigation at the time any future proposal might come forward. I wanted to note that I've got Jeff Schramm and Spencer Haney from 10W that are on virtually if there are any questions about transportation or traffic or the transportation study that's in the record. I think it's important to point out that this is not a pristine site. This is an active mine, and it's, a mine is essentially a very heavy industry. Lots of big trucks, lots of big noises. It's really an opportunity here with this proposal to reimagine what the future of this site in Grand Mount could look like. And the last speaker talked about looking at the aerial of Grand Mount. If you look at what one of the land use patterns in Grand Mount has been over the years, it's been mines that turn into basically big holes with water in them. It's not a really efficient use of land, especially in and around that urban growth boundary, and this is really a true opportunity here to transition the mine to a future economic development use that will create South County jobs and taxable valuation that the county would benefit from. With that, happy to answer questions that you may have, but we appreciate your time and consideration, and hope you approve Black Lake Quarry's expansion. Thank you.
Sorry, I can't read this too well. Trans Doven? Sorry. You're up. No worries. You're up.
So my only concerns with the Grand Mount property is that, well, they kind of turned down the school maybe to expand the, the property of the school, and we have, I have four children that go to the school, three actually right now, but they, the, it's kind of tough when they do have kids that are in, what do you call them? Portables, thank you very much. So, you know, for them not to expand the school and then wanting to add this huge project to it, I'm not totally against it. I believe that, you know, it would bring good to the community, but looking at the community off of 201st, it's kind of not in the greatest shape. My other concern is, is that all the other projects that were done with these newer housing developments is that when they did their covert, it just, they just put a covert in, and then they didn't really, I mean, I know they fenced it off and stuff, but it's kind of, there's nowhere else for the water to drain to, and I live right across the street. So, that's kind of concerning, and also for the whole entire area there. They don't have any, I guess, playgrounds or nothing, so none of these kids have any opportunity to do other things, except for write graffiti on fences, burn out on the roads, you know, kind of tear up the whole neighborhood. So, I mean, when, you know, further on, when kids develop in the area from all the housing being pushed, so. Other than that, I, I thought that they weren't going to be hooking up to sewer and water, but I see that they'll be doing that, so. Which, that's a good sign. No septic tanks, because most of us run off of wells, so, you know. And that, that's all I got to say. Appreciate it.
You too. Thank you for coming. Christine Tomah.
Hello, I'm Christine Tomah. I live on 196th, directly across from Black, Black Lake Mine Quarry. I do have a few concerns, but a couple of them were answered a little bit earlier. My biggest concern is if they're going to expand into more industrial, how many businesses are actually going to be there? Will there be an upgrade on 196th? Right now, 196th is not that great of a road. I was told that most of the business traffic will go on to Sergeant Road, which is okay, too, but Sergeant Road is also, if you're, if you're ever out that way, it's, it's a big concern, because Sergeant Road then runs right into a roundabout. So, things are going to have to happen there, too, I think, on Sergeant Road. Are we going to get the streets wider, more sidewalks? What kind of construction time will they be having? Will they have it, like, from, because right now, the, the trucks run out of there at 6 o'clock in the morning. It's not a big concern right now, but I used to work nights, get home at 2:30 in the morning, and when the trucks started running at 6 o'clock in the morning, it was hard to sleep. Are we going to, when they start the construction, is there going to be a certain construction time? And then my next question is, or my next statement is, what about the water and sewer? Is there going, are they going to put in water and sewer for this industrial park? And then, are my taxes going to go up? I'm a senior citizen and getting ready to retire, and I don't know if the taxes go up, you know, how, they've already gone up the last three years in a row. It's going to be difficult. So, those are my concerns, and I do appreciate the Urban Growth inviting me here, and I do appreciate Urban Growth in general, and I do want to see some things happen, but I just want those, I just wanted to voice those concerns.
Thank you. Mike Parsons.
Good afternoon, Commission, Commissioners. First of all, I want to say thank you for going through and all these processes. I watched some of your other troubles and things that you have to deal with on a daily basis. And I want to also thank the staff. Your staff has done a great job. You've got some stellar people in the staff that makes our life a little easier, trying to understand what, what we're trying to do here. But those two things I want to say upfront. We've been involved in this, now this is our fourth year since we brought this to the, our project made an application to rezone, and I don't want to regurgitate a lot of the stuff I've said in the past, but it's, it's, for us, is, you know, we, we hear the process, during the process, it's about vision. What, what is the vision for Thurston County? I hear that a lot from the people that don't really respect what we're trying to do. You know, I've lived here for 62 years. I'm the third generation. We have vision as landowners as well, what we see, what we see Thurston County has turned out to be over the last, you know, 40 years. One of our vision projects was the Craft District in Tumwater. My family owns that. We developed it. That was a vision that we, it turned out to be very positive for the community, and we've done a lot with the land trust and given easements and different things. This, this one, we are in the gravel business. We own three gravel pits. We're, we're not the typical gravel company, gravel operator that, I think we're the only local ones. Most of them are out of Seattle or Tacoma, and a lot of that revenue goes up north, you know, that's generated from those. But we are, we're, we don't see, everything is gravel. You know, everything is mine, 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 get the gravel out of the ground. We still have 20 years of gravel in that, in that pit, so it has a lot of economic life. But we also see, all right, let's stop before we get to the point of no return, and we have to get into the water table, which we're permitted to go another 100 feet, end up with another lake. Let's, look at the map. I mean, these lakes are just fenced off lakes. They have no value to the, to the community, and so that's when we made a decision. Let's create an economic, some kind of economic driver for the family, for the county. Let's talk about that. I mean, the county itself is in dire need, in my opinion, of more tax base. You need tax base to cover some of these deficits that we're running into these last few years, and it's based on tax base revenue. You know, and Grand Mount's, you know, a really good situation for the county, because it's, you're not sharing it with the city of Lacey, or you're not sharing it with the city of Tumwater. city of Tomwater. You got your own little pot of, of, of gold down there to, to work and, and generate revenue for the county. So, you got three, three things going on. You got the landowner, you got the county that's in need of tax base revenue, you've got the, the citizens of Thurston County that want a lot, at least what I see, they're all against what we try to do, or a lot of them are, and they, they want to, you know, expand this, or we got HCP, which is an important item, that takes a lot of land, takes a lot of resources, staff. You've got the, the agricultural thing, that takes a lot of time and effort, but none of that drives revenue. And that's what this county needs, and a tax base. You're limited to 1% tax increase per year that you can grab for your, for, for revenue for the county, but does that help enough to get you out of these shortfalls that I anticipate seeing for the next three, four, or five years? It's been quite a process. It's, it's been like a four quarter rugby match, you know, getting kicked in the side and the way people are, how they react and talk and, but ultimately, out of the experience that we've had, it's, it's been a good one. And it's been, and I would suggest that anybody that's a landowner in Thurston County, get to know your Commissioners, get to know your staff, talk to them, educate them. Because you need, you know, everybody needs to be educated. I'm, you know, I'm a landowner, I, I can see things different than, than the most, so that would be my suggestion. I wouldn't, I would say, I've answered a couple of your questions, I would meet with you anytime. That's not a problem, I gave you my number. One quick thing, you know, schools, yeah, we need more, what, what helps schools, you know, there's huge impact fees, there's, in development, that they're going to generate revenue for those things. So, I appreciate your time and, and effort that you've put into it, and I, I hope we can get this thing to a vote here soon. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple other folks, but they said they didn't want to, they did not want to testify, so I'm just going to open up anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to provide testimony. Wide open to anybody who hasn't already. Yeah, come on up. Maybe pull that mic down when you get up there, make sure we capture you. Alright.
Thank you. My name is Juana Rivera, and I live on 201st Avenue. I'm not so worried about the mine being rezoned. I'm more concerned about the impact for the project on Grand Mound. I current, I, I don't have any children at school anymore, but I do see the struggles, 201st has just one bus route for that road. And the struggles were with my children, they'd always have problems at the bus, so now putting 464 homes on that street. I'm sure not everybody's going to have children, but we all know that there will be some children there. So, that, said, with that said, also, the schools are running on portable classes, classrooms, so we've failed the bond a couple years. So, I know they said with, with the new construction, the school get, does get a part of, of that for the school, but just wanted to throw that out. Also, the roads. Are they going to expand the roads? There's always accidents on T Street and 201st. And also taxes, property taxes. With that, I know a lot of people get excited when their property value goes up, but that's if they're planning on selling, but people that had been there for quite some time and they don't plan to go anywhere, they sure don't, we don't want our property taxes to go any higher than, than we're already paying. When we were looking to building our home, that was 20, 24 years ago, we were looking, my husband lived in, worked in Seattle, so he had a large commute. We looked at houses in Tacoma, Puyallup, but we didn't like one house after another. We wanted our privacy, we wanted some room, and that's why we chose Rochester, because we had that space. And now with all this new development coming in, then we're not, we're not going to have that privacy anymore. We live on four acres, and it's, sometimes it's a little challenging to get a permit to build something. And the cost of the housings right now, they say it's affordable housing, but not so much. You try to go out and buy a house, right now you, just even a decent house, $500,000. Well, if I'm considered rural, does that mean that just across the street it's going to be urban now? Is my property going to be urban? Am I going to be able to, be able to build a home for my, one of my kids in the near future? So, that's all I got.
One more. Come on, sir.
Hi, my name is Randy Culp, I live on 198th. I'm, my brother and I ran the sewer from the corner of 198th and Sergeant Road up 198th to Tamrac Drive and Isabella Lane. And so, and I've been in, there for 17 years. And since you guys opened up that roundabout on Highway 12, the traffic on 198th is a thousandfold. I'm out there every single morning with my dog at 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and the cars that go by there is a constant stream, constant. And if you put 400 more houses down the road from me, you have to have a traffic light in order to get out of my driveway. So, and the other thing about the mine, I don't understand that. Is it going to be opened up for a mine? Or is it going to be opened up for housing? Or, I don't, I didn't understand that part.
The, uh...
The mine across...
Yeah, it goes, the, the new zoning proposal would be light industrial.
So, it will be on a working mine?
No, it's a mine now, it's a mine now on residential zoning. It would go to light industrial and no longer be a mine.
Oh, okay. Well then, yeah, because it used to be where that mine would start working at 6:00 in the morning and the banging and the clanging and the stuff, and you guys put in sewer and water down there to make a residential area and then have a mine across the street. I don't know if anybody wants to live there, so now it's going to be just commercial, basically like the big warehouse they put behind.
You can ask Mr. Parsons or Mr. Toyer, and I'm sure they'll explain it to you.
Yeah, okay, I didn't, I didn't know, it wasn't very explanatory. But, yeah, as far as putting 400 more houses down the road from me, no, I'm not, because I know my taxes will go up. And they just gravel the road, okay, they didn't make it wider, they just gravel what was there, and it just, the traffic is horrendous. So, just with the roundabout, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom? Before I go to telethon line. Okay, thank you. If someone could help me with the names?
So, Mike Muller has raised his hand.
Perfect, Mr. Muller, you have four minutes.
Yeah, hi, I just want to say a good afternoon to the board, I think that's how I address you. I'm Christina that just spoke earlier, I'm her neighbor, and my concerns are is not only the traffic, the light industrial, I went on your website and I looked at it, and it said it could be like warehouses and different types of, you know, like post office and stuff like that, but if you look at the map, to me, the only thing that could possibly go in there is possibly another warehouse because of the way the setup, and I don't know, I'm just assuming. But I don't want to be looking out my window and looking at a warehouse. I don't want to be dealing with the truck traffic, even though we do have some truck traffic coming out of the mine. I don't hear it very much, but Christina might. My other concern is our taxes going up, because they have raised quite, quite, quite a bit in the last couple of years, and I get it, I know that we need to make a boundary there or a means to where we can take care of everybody. And my nether one is the environmental. I do see animals, I am worried about having more truck traffic killing animals and stuff like that. There isn't much that I could see going on with the Black Lake, like you said, it's just a big pond with water, and I'm looking right out the main entrance of it. I don't know where the entrance would be coming into it, but the traffic alone on 196th and Sergeant Road is a killer. It's just crazy, especially if you're trying to turn from Sergeant Road onto 196th with all the traffic that's coming, and now you're going to import and put more traffic on it. I don't think our roads could handle it, but all in all, I'm totally against this. I'm not looking forward to having a big warehouse, you know, looking out of it, and I am kind of concerned about my property values. So, anyways, thank you for listening to me, I appreciate everything, and that's all I really have to say. I hope you guys vote no against this.
Okay, thanks, sir.
So, are other individuals online that would like to provide testimony today? If you could use the raise hand feature? Old fashioned one, a Mr. Spar, I saw your hand, Travis Spar?
Uh, yeah, so, I own property and I live on T Street, and I would just like to, first of all, go on the record that I vehemently oppose the Wilmowski project, to build those 400 and something units over there. I've lived in this house now for over 10 years. This was a great area that I wanted to move to, it's peaceful, it's quiet. I've got two boys in school here, one in the high school and one in the elementary school. I don't know if you guys have ever been there before, but if you have, you will know that it cannot support that many more kids. Right now, they're pretty much at maximum capacity from what I understand. Another thing is too, like the other gentleman mentioned, the taxes, we're already taxed a lot in Thurston County, and I do not want to see my taxes go up anymore. Addressing the roads, yeah, when I first moved here, it was like Mayberry. There was no traffic, everything was quiet, it was all good to go, and then you guys built the roundabout over there, and now it is a racetrack down T Street. The, the speed limit's 35 miles an hour, and people routinely do 50 miles an hour. My kids don't even go up front to play anymore because it is unsafe. The congestion that we already have from the development that's happened kind of over off of 201st right now, with, with all of the traffic, it's, it's not a good idea. My land value is going to plummet, because nobody, if, if I was to sell my house right now, it's nice and peaceful and quiet, building 400 houses directly behind mine is going to make my, my land value plummet. I am not okay with that. Also, if you guys are putting everybody on a septic, or I'm sorry, on, on city water and city sewer, I don't want to be on city water and city sewer. I love my well water, it's very nice, I don't want chlorinated, you know, crappy water. Yeah, the, the crime is going to go up. Every time that you bring 400 more people into the area, you're going to have a whole lot of crime. There's a lot of crime that comes out of the trailer park that's, that's right on the other side of that property. Of course, that's going to go up as well, and I don't want to have to deal with that. None of my neighbors want to have to deal with that. I enjoy my privacy in my backyard, I can go out and I can have a, I can have a fire, I can roast marshmallows with the kids, I can ride my, my four wheeler around the yard and things. I know that I'm going to have Karens on the other side of the fence complaining about noise and all kinds of stuff and the smoke and, and this and that from me just having a recreational fire. This is, this is a terrible idea, and I would just, I would also like to speak for my neighbor, Joe, that lives directly next to me, he can't be here today because he has to work, but he also opposes this. I believe that everyone in the area around here is going to oppose the, the Wilmowski project. Far as the, uh, the mine goes, I really don't have any, any concerns about that, but I know that you guys are probably just going to do whatever you want to do with this, but if development starts, I'm going to have to sell, and I also run a business in Thurston County, so I'm going to have to pick up my business and move it. So, don't, do not do this to us down here.
Thanks, sir.
Any, any other individuals that would like to provide testimony today? If you could use the raise hand feature? Any other individuals online? Casey Taylor?
Sorry, I'm trying to find the raise hand feature and I can't find it.
That's okay, your hand works.
Okay, so, I am also one of the neighbors off of 198th Avenue. I'm not too far from Travis who just spoke. I'm in agreement with everything that he says, and a couple of the others. My husband has owned this property for over 25 years, one of the first properties developed here across from the property that's being discussed to be developed on 198th Avenue. I definitely have some concerns too, not only we're bringing up schools and we're bringing up traffic, I have, I have been here for 16 years on this property and raised both of my kids at the schools, both have graduated from Rochester High School, started RPS, went to Grand Mound. I've seen the growth throughout all those years at all the schools, seen the increase in portables, so I definitely agree that the schools cannot handle it. The traffic has definitely had a major impact, not just did the roundabouts, also the developing that's already going on anyways in Grand Mound, and the roundabouts just kind of funneled everybody into our neighborhood as well in order to cut through over to Highway 9 and to the schools. So, that's a problem, but also, nobody's brought up the fire department. The fire department has also had shortages and requested, you know, additional money and things like that in order to respond to our area properly and have, you know, meet those needs. So, if there's another 400 and some odd houses, you know, how's that going to affect our, our fire department that's already struggling? And then crime too, crime has increased here, and another problem as we know also is the Sheriff's Department is very understaffed. Thank goodness Sheriff Sanders tried and increased more deputies on staff, but I was just at the recent town hall meeting here in Rochester, and know that he said there's only one deputy generally at a time to cover this area from like, oh, it's a big area. Gosh, I, I don't remember exactly, it was like West Side Olympia all the way down here and to Tonino, just with one deputy. So, if you increase our population here as well, that's also even less response from the Sheriff's Department in order to respond to the crime that we already have. And I am also, you know, in agreement with the fact that we just don't have anything to offer anybody in our neighborhoods. Most of the time, now I now have grandchildren, so most of the time I take my children to, to Tonino City Park, to Chehalis City Parks, to Centralia City Parks, things like that, because there's nowhere safe or nowhere for our children here to exercise or play. We have what they call a park down in Rochester, that's really just kind of a walking area and a very, you know, limited, it's at the old school district, so it's very limited on, you know, updated toys and things like that for young children or developmental, you know, people that need a different playground equipment, so that's why I also take my children or grandchildren to other areas. So, I just think that there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, and I know that I have talked to a lot of my neighbors who just got notice of this hearing, they were actually not even sent out the letter because apparently they aren't within the 500 feet. Some of these neighbors have been here for decades more than my husband that live on T Street, so right across from Travis Spar, and they have concerns as well. And, and also were upset that they didn't get notification in time because they aren't within the 500 feet of this property. And so, we'd like to request, I know I've talked to them too, and they weren't able to make it to this meeting, but to request some type of delay so that they can get proper notification and research this further, and I would ask for that as well, because this really, I think I only found out about it about a week and a half ago. Also, I agree with Travis Spar, I am a small business owner here, I started my business in 2018, you know, and I like being in this rural area, you know, with my business, so I would not want to start over somewhere else. And I'll go ahead and leave it at that, and thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you. Ashley, could I mention that, you know, obviously we're having a public hearing, Commissioners take emails any time of day, any days, there would be no action on this item before December, just based on the...
There would be no action on this item before December, just based on, at the earliest. So please encourage your neighbors who maybe you're just hearing about it to go ahead and continue to submit written communication to the commissioners or to Ashley's staff at CPAD. And we will make sure that gets disseminated.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, Troy Spar has turned her camera on.
Very good.
If you can unmute, Mrs. Spar.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
You're all good. You have four minutes.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I completely in agreement with, with Casey and my husband Travis. We live right here on T Street. And I just don't want 400 people, all these houses looking down on a, on a backyard. And I don't think you guys understand how much we love it here and we are so comfortable being here. And if any of these things that are going, I understand there's revenue involved. But if any of these things were going on in your backyard, you would be speaking something completely different. So let us have a, a great, comfortable life in a discreet community with a little bit lower crime rate. Mind you, it's, it's much more than it used to be because of all the things that you've already put in in Grand Mound with the restaurant and the roundabout. You, you get a lot of very questionable people walking through here, and it's only going to be worse. Again, you're not going to understand how important this is to us unless this was going on in your backyard. So I, I know it's all about the money, it is your money. I, I understand that, but you have to understand where we're coming from too. This is, this is going to make it really bad for us, and we are going to have to move if you put all those folks in our backyard. So that's, that's all I wanted to tell you.
Thank you.
Any other individuals who would like to provide testimony online? If you could use the raise hand feature or turn on your camera and wave at us? Commissioners, I'm not seeing any other individuals.
So then we can move to a discussion. If, Ashley, can you remind me what kind of the timeline looks like for the board's next actions?
Yeah, so the only action you have to take today is closing the public hearing as a board. And then if you so choose, you can schedule a follow-up work session to discuss the comments that were here today. And staff can do some additional research and respond to some of the concerns that were raised. And then final action, as you mentioned, chair mentor would not take place before December 17th as part of that once a year decision that the board can make on any type of comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay. Anything we want to discuss before closing the public hearing? Phil Edwards?
No, I just want to ask Ashley, will staff be attempting to answer some of the questions raised here?
There are a few that I would be able to answer. Otherwise, I would want to do additional research. Are there any, any that rise to the top for you? And I will do my best.
I'll throw one out there if, and you might be able to answer it or you might need to follow up. But there were a lot of questions about, I mean, about, about roads and traffic. And just an overview of how traffic considerations play into the, this analysis might be useful. It was a reference to a traffic study in this case, and there are traffic impact fees. And I don't know exactly what road improvements, if any, are embedded, but explaining that might be useful.
Yeah, I think those are good questions. As part of the environmental review, the applicants work together with 10W to do a high-level traffic impact analysis.
10W?
10W, it's a traffic engineering firm. And so they did a high-level analysis, and the scope of that analysis was actually reviewed and signed off on by Washington Department of Transportation, as well as our own Public Works Department, to make sure they were looking at all of the appropriate intersections and roadways. There are a list of potential improvements that would need to be made. However, they really need to be linked to a specific development application. So what we're recommending in the, as part of the environmental review, is requiring any future development application to consult this, this analysis that was already done, as well as conduct a, you know, any kind of additional analysis for that development. As part of any development proposal for an industrial or multifamily development, you would see frontage improvements. You would see potential improvements to any intersections that would be, you know, impacted by the additional traffic. But we won't have a specific list of conditions until there is a, a development proposal.
So the, I'll give you a sec. So the board, so this is pretty important. The board's decision before it, in the next couple of months, is about the zoning and what would be allowed. An example being that Wilmowski is from 1 to 5 acres to 4 to 16, I think it was. So allowing a more dense development. But then, that doesn't mean, our decision wouldn't necessarily mean that that's going to, it doesn't specify what's going to be built. Someone would have to come with an application saying, here's what we intend to build under the now, the new zoning allowance. And at that point, you would make potentially conditions about traffic, frontage improvements or something like that?
Yes, you're, you're right. The board's current action is to allow for a future development, but that future development proposal would be reviewed for compliance with all of our transportation system plans, all of our sewer and water plans, as well as all of our current codes and ordinances for that zone.
Yeah, that, I mean, it's important because the property owner may change their mind and do something different. This kind of works both ways, where sometimes we're like, we want to change the zoning to, because of this proposal, but we change the zoning and we don't necessarily get that proposal in the, in the, in the final instance, unless you have an agreement to do, to do that. But I just kind of point that out. So it sounds like the traffic concerns that we heard from a lot of quarters today could potentially, I don't, I make no promises, but could potentially be addressed in the permitting of a specific development application.
That is correct.
At a later point than what the decision that we're making about a zoning scheme.
Yep, that is correct.
Commissioner Edwards?
And you'll be addressing traffic impact fees and park impact fees and water and sewer. Who will, which areas will get it?
The applicant would be required to pay those fees at the time of development.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, so that's going to address some of those issues if they move forward.
Thank you. So just based off public comment, I will need a follow-up work session just to kind of be brief. And, you know, I've taken a lot of notes from public comment today. So I'm happy to follow up with staff on kind of what my list of questions are, but I just need a little bit of time to just kind of discern through everything we've, we've heard today.
Mr. Candace, do you have something? Sometimes that happens, but, you know, like I said, I, I always, for the, the board's going to read anything we receive. And if we receive that and read it before we make a decision, it's going to essentially have an, an impact. So I always encourage people to continue to, if an applicant wants to respond to something they heard, they're more than welcome to.
We can expand it like we did for the Shoreline Master Plan. We expanded it for...
And as, and as long as it is shared with staff, if it comes into you and you share it with us, we'll make sure to put it in our public portal. So that way there's transparency in terms of any comments coming in between now and a final action.
Sometimes we have to, by law, we have to have certain formal periods of public comment, but the reality is it's a little more expansive than that because the commissioners are always reading and disseminating information that we get.
We pretty much always, we never do less than what's required, but we always pretty much do more.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Another thing I did want to point out, I did get confirmation that we sent notice to the Rochester School District of the proposal, the environmental review and the hearing. We did not receive anything from them, but given the number of questions that have come up, we'll, we'll reach out to them and see if they do have any feedback.
Perfect, that was one of my questions.
Okay, perfect. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I make one comment real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to really quickly echo my seatmate's comments regarding contacting us. We heard a lot today. I also took a ton of notes. When we first saw the docket items earlier this year, I drove, I took like two days and drove around and visited every single site. So for those who have made comments about like, you know, you have to come, you see it and talk to the people who live here, that's what I'm all about. Like, I'm not from South County, so I feel like in order for me to vote on things like this, I have to talk to the people who live there. So if you have comments and you want to reach out, I'm willing to like set up calls. My email's on the county website, so for anyone in here or anyone listening, please reach out. And I'd love to follow up on some of the concerns that you have if you want to have a conversation.
Is there a motion?
I can't see who was speaking.
That was Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Call for the vote. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is closed, and we will have a follow-up briefing with the board in fairly short order.
We'll take care of that.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I know it's a distance down there to hear directly from people is really useful to us, and so we appreciate that and the folks online who joined.